Good morning, welcome to Board of Selectmen's work session. It's Monday, January 29th. Please stand in line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim has given word that he's going to be a little bit late. Is it okay with the board? You want to discuss the warrant article and the warrant in the cemetery? Do you want us to bump you up so you don't have to sit here?
Sure, but I would also like to talk about the roads. I don't know if you want me to wait for Jim to be here for that.
Would you mind that way?
I think it'd be better.
Sure. I'm here to accommodate all you people if you have other appointments. So I'll go to the... That's this form we're talking about, correct?
It's number 16 on this. It's not on that because it didn't go to DRA yet.
Okay.
So it's number 16 on the town warrant.
So all the warrant articles are going to be reviewed by DRA?
Except for this one that you're going to speak about now.
That will be the one at the bottom of page three draft.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Did you get a copy?
No.
Oh, here's Sue, I'm sorry.
So I know that on Friday there were all these questions and those have all been answered except for this article, is that right?
Can you give an example of what the question was?
The library.
So that one that-
The math didn't work out or whatever.
Correct, that's right. So it has been modified and that copy, yep. And it can be changed on the floor at town meeting.
Right.
They don't, you know, it's not advised to keep changing it. Just change the amount at town meeting.
Okay.
And we were advised to move it up. There were some changes to the fire truck one.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. I tried to put notes of the ones they had us change.
We're paying some money but not obligating the town for all of them.
Well, it does say to enter the contract, but I know what you mean, yeah. But it points out the amount for this year, that's right.
Can I be of the least... For $5.80 for the purpose of purchasing for the... The lease agreement contains an escape clause. That's all set with DRA.
I modified it for what they suggested. They didn't tell me verbatim what to do, but they gave the suggestion. So now we'll send it back the way I wrote it, unless you folks have changes. And we'll see if they like the way I rewrote it.
Are we prepared to talk about Article 16? The new article for cemetery funding?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just needed some clarification.
No, no, that's what we're here for, it's a work session. Who wants to begin?
Do we have the original so we can see what the changes are?
That's the new one that had to be created.
Right, but wasn't there a... I thought DRA had a question about who was expending the money or is that the wording in some form? Forget what it was.
I think that was for the hearing last week.
Correct.
The issue last week where you were accepting the money and it said in it that it would be handled by the trustees of the trust funds. That was, I believe it'd be-
Yeah, I don't know. But this has not gone to DRA yet at all, just so we're clear. This one you're working on now.
As I remember, there was some... Lack of clarity on whether town meeting needs to approve the establishment of the trust fund or if the governing body can do that. So, and I guess what we're saying is it needs to go on the warrant for approval by...
This is so you don't have to have a hearing every time there's a large donation.
Right, you actually opened, you accepted making the fund on last Monday.
The fund is established.
The public hearing, yeah.
Right.
This is for the over $10,000 award then? That's for this.
That's the difference that happened because I'm reading my notes for, they had asked me to draft a warrant article. And in my original notes, we were establishing the fund.
So we've already established the fund?
And that's what they had-
This allows the fund to... Excuse me. Accept donations without-
Of any size, without public care.
Without...
And to stay in effect until rescinded by a vote of the town.
Right.
So in other words, the trustees get the donation usually and they would bring it to you guys and let you know that it's there when you accept it, but you don't have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
This is just for future donations, the other ones taken care of. We did the public hearing for that, that's all done.
So, one line that I had put in here for whatever reason, years and years ago.
I did rewrite yours because after I explained that the thing was-
And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept such trust without further action by the town.
That I missed out.
And you changed it to expendable trust fund remains in care of the town cemeteries and burial lots without further action of town. Okay, so you just took the redundancy out of mine and put it into the first sentence, okay?
Feel free to change it, absolutely, it's just a draft, so.
I always need an editor. Ask Susie. That's my wife.
They're here for edits, so look forward if you want to.
I think we all need editing from time to time.
Especially after you stare at it for 10 minutes.
So all of them we accept as our article is drafted?
Also, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. You have nothing to add to it, do you?
Sue, just for this meeting, would you mind if I had that page back to follow and I'd be glad to send it to you after? Thank you.
You don't need to send it to me.
You're all set?
Yep.
Do we want to start going through the warrant articles? Now, they recommend, DRA recommended that we do the library first, correct?
Yes.
And then those related things, partly because the polls, if someone moves to go to secret ballot, the polls have to stay open for an hour, correct?
Well, it is secret ballot for-
But it's a money, money-
Yes, right. It's a two-thirds vote secret ballot as required by statute.
We had put the change in the money that we're holding for the library currently before the library and that was a non-money issue.
Right.
We wanted the money issues to go first.
So since the fir-, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So then the library article will be the first article?
Well, actually, the first one needs to be what's there now, changing the use.
I thought it was the other way around.
Well, then the money can be, it has to, the library building has to be the first money article, not necessarily the first article.
Okay.
Okay, and it's because it mentions the word bond. So we have to have the first one to change the use of the fund. And then you can move on to-
So if we were to remove the word bond, does that change anything?
I think so.
Okay.
That's how I, although we know what we could do just to be sure, this is the white, the DRA's thing, so just put this behind. I understood it was just because it mentioned bond.
As a practical matter at town meeting, once you open the balloting on the bond issue, it has to stay open for hours, so.
Okay, and that was a timing thing, yeah.
It makes sense to, as that balloting goes on, to go on and work on other articles rather than just total nonsense.
And it makes sense to talk about, about the non-money article to do that before we talk about the money article? What if the money article fails?
No, you can't do the money article until you change the use of it.
Okay.
And... Right? You had to change the use of the fund to spend the money on an addition.
Correct, it expands it.
So you have to do that one first.
Yep. So we're all set with Article 1?
All right. Which is our, right. Now Karen, you put in your two-thirds vote on that?
Yes, that's-
And why is that?
Diane let me know that and it's because...
But we'll check that, all right. Again, capital reserve fund is established with a simple majority, right? And so double check that expanding the use would require a supermajority.
Okay, Diane, I mean, yeah, Diane didn't know about that. Do you want me to see if she can talk to it?
Sure.
Yep.
Now it's time to resolve.
Yeah, there's nothing in the notes from Clark, Michelle Clark, DRA. In the extended purposes of including expansion and renovation, the required change was place a zero in front of all single-digit warrant articles. It's a clerical thing. And then when an article changes the purpose of a plan, in essence, it becomes a new fund. At that time, this new fund has no agent's name.
Which is why we added the agency, yeah.
Right. To have agents on a fund that have been purchased change, that pointing the agent should be considered. And the intent is to have agents, the power on wording should be added. And there's nothing else, nothing about it. I can see why. Because it had the two-thirds vote running into them. Sorry, that line.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning.
How are you?
While we're waiting for them to come back, it looks like Article 4 is okay. Article 5 is okay. Article 6 is okay.
Yep.
Article 7 is okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. She didn't have much to add to my video, it was just because the change in the use of the capital reserve. But I can certainly triple check that, you know. A DRA approved it written that way with the two-thirds.
With the two-thirds?
Well, it was sent to them with the two-thirds.
Yes, it got changed for the majority, but yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it needs two-thirds.
I don't, I don't, yeah, we need to double check.
Yeah, that's fine, I can check.
Can we change?
I mean, I always understood the rationale for the supermajority is because town meeting is committing to town to expenditures in future years beyond the current year.
Just a routine thing, do we need to change the vote from two to three now that you're here on wording for Article 2?
Go ahead and vote if we're going to do that.
Do we need a revote?
I think we should, I mean it-
Shows-
Makes it clearer to vote.
Yeah, cleaner, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Also move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, the record shows recommended by the Board of Selectmen 3-0.
And that was for number 2, right?
No, Article number 2.
And then you'll do number 3 as well?
I'm going to still reuse myself on number 3.
Okay, so we'll leave that be.
Yeah. So would that be 2?
0-1.
0-1. Okay, now we're down to Article 8 on page 2 and a revisit with Jim. Come on down, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? Okay. Was that the one for the paving around the highway garage?
No, that's the-
The 235.
The highway maybe.
The 235. Okay. I think where we left it was we were trying to get an estimate together for Shirley Way, is that how we left?
Yeah, there was-
One of these.
Yeah, part and part of the conversation.
So, basically, I didn't have enough time to meet with Frank. Frank was away on his home view trip and he's back. But what we came up with was for a mile of reclaim and paving, it's $135,000 a mile. So I was hoping that we can kind of just figure it out, come here what we needed to do. Because I also remember we talked about, excuse me, federal corners.
How many miles of road do we have coming?
Well, I think as far as char roads, I think we have like around 32 miles of payers.
So at, excuse me, at $135,000 a mile, right? You've got probably a mile and three quarters and then 235. And I'm just trying to do some big math here.
Yeah, trying to get some overall picture.
So you're looking at doing a 32-year rotation on paving?
Well, that's also with a reclaim. I'm going to say that not all of them will be reclaimed, especially if they have been reclaimed in the last 10 years. Had to go back to do something, you probably wouldn't reclaim it. Because I think, excuse me, Sodom Road and-
Two-thirds of Sodom was reclaimed, right? And the other third was just overlaid, if I remember correctly?
Correct, yep.
The third at this end was just overlaid?
Correct, because it was in good shape. And I think that had been reclaimed probably 20 years ago. So it didn't need to be reclaimed again, so it seems to help.
So reclamation has a lifespan of 20 years?
Well, it's, I don't have an exact guess. I'm assuming that's probably different everywhere.
So what's the pay, how far can you go, I would work this? What's a mile of just paving at Sodom?
Let's, I don't know if I can figure that out.
If you go by this, Mr. Carroll gives us three different figures.
Yeah.
One road he does two and a half inches, another road he gave us two, another road was an inch and a half. So Mr. Carroll needs to come in and explain this all. There's being something lost in this translation. And Mr. Carroll is an excellent vendor of sounding towns like him. I went through here extrapolating it all out saying, you know, how many tons per-
Let's approach it a different way. Looking at historically, you've been reviewing it for how long, five, six years?
Nine.
Nine years.
Yeah, nine years.
Nine years, okay. What's the lifespan of a paved top of a road before it needs to be repaved? Is it 10 years? Is it?
I'm going to say that we probably, looking at closer to 15 years.
15 years?
And it's also, you know, how far do we feel that we want to go as to where before we are paving them?
So if it's 15 years, we need to do two miles a year in order to stay anywhere near a schedule.
Okay, 130 miles a road.
130 miles a road. I mean, that's where I'm trying to figure it out.
Okay.
And if we're going to budget, figure out a lifespan budget and figure out how we fit into that.
Well, that might be a good way to approach it, I think, say 15 years and 130 miles, so.
Remember this that we passed out.
Yes.
After five years, your pavement on your busy roads starts to drop off, doesn't it? For example, the road that she lives on is not going to last 15 years, is it?
But that 15 years of that baseline, is that what we're looking at?
Right.
That's where the middle of the curve is.
We all have copies of this, correct? Because they've passed out twice in the last few.
But I want to say that on average, what we're probably doing is every 15 years, just how we're paving. You know, everybody has their own standard, I think, too, is how far we should go before repaving.
Yes, if you go to the second page, for example Shirley Way, it doesn't have through traffic, doesn't have truck traffic, okay? Shirley Way is different than Federal Corner Road. Federal Corner Road has an extra $10,000 cars a summer over with trucks and, doesn't it?
Federal Corner Road or Ledge Hill?
Federal Corner Road.
Okay.
Then you have Ledge Hill Road, Dergan Road, and Sodom Road that are the busiest roads in town.
So this chart, just to give this a television, says that approximately 17 years of usage, you've used up 75% of the length of the pavement.
Yes, it's into failure.
Wow, 75% of it.
And Jim has been the point that we need to, especially those outline roads, we can, they don't have to be done every five years or six years. Or like Shirley Way, what happens is some of these roads haven't been touched in your lifetime, have they?
In my lifetime, I don't know what.
So should we have, should we create two classes of roads? We have to figure out a schedule at some point.
You could, I mean, I guess you could base it on the three roads that are the most traveled.
Which have all been done recently, within the last few years.
Yes, the only thing that we didn't do is we, in the beginning, when we first started, we did half of Ledge Hill. We didn't do a reclaim on that top half. I don't feel like that one's going to last as long as the bottom half.
And then you get the-
All those parts that aren't going to last as long, I'm sure of that.
Right in front of your driveway.
Well, that's because I overused that driveway. I'm turning them out at home. So, of the... Hold on to culprits, I'm not ready to pull the check. Of the... Of the main heavily traveled roads, how many miles of the 32 is that? I mean, if you take Ledge Hill Road, Union Warf Road, Sodom Road.
Sorry.
Give me a road, I'll tell you how many feet it is.
Okay, Dergan?
Dergan Road. 6,134 feet.
Ledge Hill?
Ledge Hill Road. 16,543.
543?
Yes.
Union Warf?
Union Warf, 8,710.
And Sodom?
Sodom Road. 15,044.
15,044?
Yes. I have two things, I have Sodom Road to 109 to Garage, 15,044, and the T Garage to 1701, 15,050, is that correct?
We did that, I'm the one that actually came up with these numbers. And how I came up with those numbers is probably not a real scientific way of doing it, but I just set my odometer and traveled them and then tried to use the calculations. So they may not be real exact. And the reason why I had two different numbers on that was when we were paving, we broke it up. And that's how I came up with the numbers. We broke it up just for the paving purposes.
6,000 feet is a nautical mile, what's it reckon?
5,280.
5,280?
Yep.
It should be, we had a chart of all the roads with lots of distance.
That's about nine miles.
Except for actually, maybe 20.
So now we're down to 23 of lesser used roads.
So, yeah, and you've got residential streets, okay? You know, like High Mill and Shirley Way and that sort of thing that people go into for a neighborhood and that's it. And then you have streets that people drive from one area to another and but aren't a primary traffic way. You mentioned in our last meeting that one of the things that LRC is looking at doing, or maybe they do, is paving on it.
Yes, they do.
And as part of an overall plan for how do we address the roads, an objective, third-party evaluation of pavement is an important part of that. Because, you know, we talked to people in town that expressed their concern about pavement by their house or where they're driving. And you talked to somebody and I talked to somebody that's different and everybody has a, this road needs it. And you drive down, yep, it does. You drive down a different one, that one needs it. So the key question is, we're not going to do them all in one year, but how do we do those roads that will benefit the most in the current year? And then the next one's behind that, that sort of thing going forward.
True.
The plan that you've presented over the last number of years, I think is a reasonable approach. Whether Road A or Road B gets done this year or next year, flip-flop back and forth is subject to a lot of things. And I know you've said before that when you go out and spring and evaluate it, sometimes say, yeah, well, we're going to do this one instead of that one. But I'm going to suggest that in 2018 that we engage LRC to do a pavement evaluation of all town roads as a step as part of the putting together of a tighter plan in terms of moving forward on paving roads. It doesn't address the issue for what we're going to pave in 2018 per se or how much we're going to spend on hot top in 2018. But it's, I don't think between now and when the warrant is put together, we can get an objective valuation on pavement. But it is an important, in my view, an important thing moving forward for us to-
Well, I think in addition to that, what's probably missing from my perspective is any kind of schedule. So we should be able to sit here right now and know which paved road was done in 2002. We don't. And we should-
It's not what we do. Since I've been doing it, since I've done-
Right, since you've been doing it. So we, I mean, I like to manage by the plane crash system. Jim dies in a plane crash, what do we tell the next guy? We need to have all that set up, I think. And I think if we're following Bill's advice of actually getting a pavement survey done, I don't think we're going to have to defend the 235 at town meeting, that's just generally what we set up paving.
Right.
And we're going to determine what it's going to be at a later date. But I think we need to add to that, that we're going to figure out what it is that, if we've got 32 miles of road and you're talking about doing 1.5 miles or two miles.
Sure, go ahead.
I think there's another element that you need to look at. And that is the type of maintenance that you do on the roads. I think shoulder maintenance and ditch maintenance prolongs the life of the pavement. So I've been trying to get at, and I don't think, I think we can do a much better job- I think we can do a much better job with shoulders and ditches that will help save our roads. I've got two pictures in there of ditch work that it's just patching, it's not putting appropriate materials down to stabilize the shoulders, to protect the pavement. This makes the edges of your pavement give out, break off. It gets the water corroding under the pavement, it shortens the life of the pavement. And I think if you're gonna do this study, that could be a good thing, you should look at these other things as well. And the only thing we have on shoulders on Ledge Hill Road is winter sand, really, if you come right down to it. There's a few ditches that have been filled with riprap, but once they're filled with riprap, you can't maintain them unless you dig all the riprap.
Well, I think, not interrupting you.
That's it, we're done.
I think that a pavement survey, if it's as extensive as the culvert survey that we got recently, is gonna give us the information we need, I mean, maybe the parts of Ledge Hill Road need to be done again, or something different, I mean, you mentioned different kinds of paving. You know, maybe different kinds of paving in like a Shirley Way would make that pavement run for 15 or 18 years without any trouble, so I think I think we haven't got to the point where we haven't had the ability to make a firm decision. It's my theory.
And I think you make a good point. Ditch maintenance, and that goes into roadside mowing to keep the area clear, keeping catch basins cleared, and dealing with abutters with land that is improperly drained out onto the road, you see some of that. My understanding on the basic ability of a road to have some longevity is, it's all about the base, you know, it has to have a proper base, and it has to be well-drained. Because it doesn't matter how good your base is, if it holds the water in the winter, in our world, the frost heaves are gonna take over, and once they start to expand and contract, and we get the cracks in the pavement, it's, even with good crack sealing, you're finger in the diking the situation going forward, so it seems to me that the reclaim and pave approach that's been taken with some of these roads is much better than we're just gonna do what the state does, which is lay down another two inches on top. And my read on that is that the roads, that the state roads are so far behind the power curve that there isn't, there isn't a practical way to get from where we are to...